Is it seven o'clock?
Yeah, but I would, I would have.
I see one minute.
They have to be.
One minute.
Two minutes, by my.
Two minutes, spiders?
Oh, no, one minute.
Just let it go.
A two.
So I can make the.
Now that's next.
Red. I was watching that race.
I was too.
Yes. I wanted to stay and see who won in the daytime. I would like to see Chase win.
Oh, he was too far out.
No, no, he's not. He's third now.
He was.
What? When you left, he was too far out?
Chase Elliott.
What is his name?
Chastain.
Oh, Chastain's number one, yes. All right. Is it seven?
No.
No? Oh, I'm just in such a hurry to get this in. Uh, the meeting will come to an order. Roll call. Jan?
Here.
Debbie?
Here.
Deisha?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
David?
Right here. Thank you.
Invitation and pleasures. Will you give the invitation, please?
Yes. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day and for all of our blessings, Lord. We ask your blessings on this meeting tonight. We ask that you be with all the council members and all the citizens that we can fully understand uh what's going on in our city. Lord, we ask you to forgive us all of our sins and guide us and direct us in the things that you would have us do. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, the candidates is running. Uh, general election. Candidates for councilman is full as Tim Kinnick Hagle, Amy Robertson, Deborah Burke, Barkhammer, Rhonda Kong, Karen Yates, and Russell Duckworth. The candidates for the unexpired seat is Dana Burkett, Leslie Robertson, and Patricia Herring. Uh, general election candidates for mayor is Justin Bratton and Greg Morris. Okay, we'll go to the citizens' comments. Debbie Crawford?
Last month you were talking about the trash garbage contract. Uh, when we first hooked up with this firm that's doing our trash now, which I think does a wonderful job. Uh, you got one trash can. If you wanted more than one, you had to pay extra per month. Uh, people who have their water turned off, they still get trash pickup. The city never keeps track of where all the garbage cans are. Uh, people move in, people next door to be moved in. When someone move out, they have three trash cans. I don't know who's supposed to be keeping track of all this, but, and I don't know if the city is charged accordingly, but someone needs to do to fix it, cause it's, it's way out of line right now.
Thank you. Russell Duckworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good to see you. Hope you're doing better.
Somewhat.
So, uh, water bills. Um, got a copy of a water bill. Um, I'm not sure if it's an estimated water bill or not. It doesn't say anywhere on here it's an estimated water bill. Um, January twelfth is the date that's on the bill. Do on January fifteenth, so I appreciate having that time, but on January seventeenth, I went out, Madam Mayor, and that's what my water box looked like. So I'm curious.
Are those rocks?
That's mud. So I'm curious how he actually did a reading with that thing filled up and when the last time he actually did an accurate reading of my water meter is. So I'd be curious, uh, like Ms. Crawford said, what the policies and procedures are about making sure. There are no audits that I'm aware of, at least when I was on the council, we weren't auditing water bills, but it seems like it'd be a good idea to have somebody follow behind and make sure that this is accurate information. This speaks directly to, I think, the issue of trust. Some people believe that trust is earned. Society works really well when we can trust each other as humans and just assume that we're gonna treat each other right. Like, I'm sure you've been to a restaurant recently, ordered a meal, enjoyed it. Not given a second thought as to whether or not somebody washed their hands or properly prepared that food. But if you got sick, you probably thought, thought twice about going back to that restaurant. This is just another example of how we trust the city to do things correctly, and it's not done correctly. So I would hope you would take a deeper look at that and make sure that our water bills are accurate. And accurate in a way that we are charged fairly and that the city makes the money that it needs to run the water department properly. I don't know if you've ever been to a solar eclipse, had an opportunity to drive cross-country to see one in two thousand seventeen with my daughter, and it was amazing. We went to Charleston to see it. The place where we landed was a small town outside of Charleston that was overrun during the eclipse. So I hope you've taken proper planning and procedures in place to make sure that that doesn't happen here.
Judy?
Jody.
Oh, excuse me, Jody Brown.
This guy's got something to say first. I've got a picture of the meter. Two days after he said he read it. If you'd like to see it and explain, you can read the meter.
All right. Thank you.
First attorney, I'd like you to have copy this in front of you so as I read it, you can verify if I'm factual or not. I'm Jody.
I'm auditing your reading.
Jody Ral at three ninety-seven Redner. Counsel's response to visitors' information. Specific factual information, recitation of policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. But the counsel may not deliberate, discuss, or make any decision on a subject not on the agenda. For such an item, the counsel may either make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item, or propose that it be placed on a future agenda. I do not know how many times I've heard, honestly, attorney, from you saying that the counsel can't respond, or how many times I've heard from a counsel that they said they can't respond. It's on the form. You can respond. Now, more importantly than all that, what I need to know, Mayor, we've had a hate crime committed in our town. What are you doing to protect this ca- this city and the citizens right now?
Well, I guess I was protected, cause I didn't know nothing about it.
You had no idea at the end of your street, somebody wrote KKK White Power on the house that you've gotta drive out of your neighborhood?
Nope.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. We need something done. We need the sheriff to be making patrols here.
Could you tell me whose house it was?
Uh, it is.
The White House right on the corner.
It is. Allah Hugli sister.
Not Martha, but.
Are you talking about the brick house on the corner?
Yes.
The brick house. And then there were.
Oh, my sister's name, was it?
Nancy.
Nancy. Yeah, Nancy.
Okay. No, I, be honest with you, I don't get out that much.
Okay. That's fair. I need you or somebody that's gonna be in charge of this city to get with the Sheriff's Department, get patrols out here, protect this city from hate crimes, okay? That is very dangerous. It's not a joke.
Have you reported this to the Sheriff's Office?
The Sheriff's Office apparently came out, did an investigation, everything else.
Did you report?
No, I wasn't there. I live on the other side of town.
Okay.
I'm asking. The mayor's not, or the Sheriff's Department's not gonna come out and patrol the city because I asked. If the mayor asks, they might.
It's a crime. They'll come out and take the report.
They did come out and take the report, from what I understand.
All right.
Okay. All right. That's the main things. Everything else is mute, as far as I'm concerned, if citizens aren't protected.
Could you tell me what day this happened?
Thursday night, apparently. Was it Thursday night? Cause Friday morning's when I heard about it.
Maybe.
Wednesday, yeah. It was, it was Wednesday.
Was it Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't involved in the investigation or anything else. I live on the other side of town. I heard it through here.
Cause there were vehicles, too.
Yeah, they did some vehicles, too. Thank you.
Christie Ral?
I have one on the, on the agenda.
Ten seconds?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
My name's Greg Hagle. I live at one oh nine five one, Texas thirty-four. And I would appreciate it if a concerned citizen comes up here with something serious like that, you don't put the blame back on him. That is the responsibility of city officials.
If anybody, hold on. Anybody who sees a crime or knows about it can report it.
That's true, but you turn this whole thing around on that gentleman.
I'm not gonna argue with you. Now, listen, listen, if you and I need to have a discussion, we can do it. I represent these people here. He came in and said, it is not.
I represent this gentleman.
Hold on. It is not her job to patrol the city and do that.
Is it his?
If, if.
You turned it around on him.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. If you see a crime, you can report it, right?
Right.
Why do you have to come to the city council and say the mayor should be doing it?
Why do we have to say?
That's the only thing.
Someone be calling right now.
The citizens is what I ask. The city to protect the citizens.
Please don't attack the citizens when we care.
I can. And you still turning around and blaming it on him. Still.
Christie Ral?
I want to speak to an item that's on the agenda.
What's the agenda?
With, when the agenda item comes up.
Oh, okay. No problem. What agenda, uh, item are you wanting to talk about?
Uh, the solar eclipse.
Solar eclipse.
April eighth.
It's new business on eight.
Huh?
Gee.
Okay. Administrative agenda, minutes of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Before we say that, I would like to say that as. It's all broke down. Huh? It's all broke down. Yeah. Uh, past due current, we have eight hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents owed the city for water bill. Three days past due. Nine thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and sixty-two cents past due on the water bills. That's thirty to sixty. What's this? Thirty-one to sixty. Okay. Uh, sixty-one days past due, we have twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-three cents past due. Total past due water bills for a town that doesn't have money is forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-six cents. For all of y'all that was so worried about the water, being so important, the water here in town. Why is this water bill? Uh, why is people not paying their water bill? No.
Nobody here.
It's really dogged.
Anyone who's in charge of the water?
Utility, uh, minutes of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Is there any questions, discussion?
I just noticed on, um, administrative agenda, um, item number E, it's just a small typo, but it says, uh, makes motion no to ex- instead, I think it was not to accept, but it's a minor deal. But anyway, just FYI.
Okay.
But that's the only thing I saw.
Make a motion to accept the minutes with the change of no to not.
Second thing.
Okay. All in favor? Jan?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes for February sixth. Any discussions?
Make a motion to accept the mi- the minutes for the special meeting February sixth.
Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Deisha? Greg? Thank you. Okay, informants. Accounts payable for February twenty-four.
Okay, I have a, um, question on the RM quality construction.
You have a question for what?
Uh, on the general fund.
RM.
RM quality construction.
It's the Cooper House.
The hundred and twelve.
Payment.
Payment. Yeah, I know, but the thing is, have we received them?
The funds?
We did receive. Okay, that's what I need to know.
It's just like a pass through.
Yeah, I figured it was. I just wanna confirm that we had received the funds.
Um, I'd like to ask a question. I understand, isn't it the nine thousand dollars that we pay every month that we have no idea where it's going and who's getting it?
We do now.
Oh, we do?
Mm-hmm.
Share? What name?
Probably be a better item shared on Thursday night.
Oh, okay. No problem.
We have a meeting Thursday night?
Huh?
What?
Oh, we have a meeting Thursday night. Okay, nevermind.
Any other questions?
Um. No, as long as we receive those funds. That's all I was concerned about.
Yeah, we've already received them.
Yeah, if that's done, then I, there's no, just, I'll make sure.
I make a motion to accept the accounts payable.
All in favor, Jan? Well.
He made a motion.
Did you make a motion, Greg?
Yes.
Are you second?
Second.
No, I didn't. Oh, second.
Okay, Debbie, do you? Are you in favor, Jan?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Uh.
Aye.
Okay. All right, the council's financial report for January twenty twenty-four, just did, just did that.
I'm assuming since we haven't got the audit yet, is, we just need to table it till after the audit?
Yes.
Motion to table.
Second.
Okay, I assume you're in favor of it.
To table it, yes ma'am.
Debbie?
Yes.
Uh.
Greg?
No.
Informative reports, utility and public works department.
We fixed several leaks. Uh, we've got one that we're not, we may have to replace a valve on, that flush valve that goes down to the sewer plant. Uh, Paul's worked on it twice, and we're probably gonna have to replace it.
Okay.
Uh, we did one over here, and I don't know the streets here. It's the one behind the main street. But anyway, the leak was, uh, at the, uh, corporation stop. Uh, our pump is a three-inch pump, and when it runs out of water, it loses prime. I have in my notes that I'm gonna talk on the agenda, we need a two-inch pump because they will self-prime as the water rises and falls. But we had to wind up calling that pump service to get the water off the bad money thing so we could fix it. And, you know, we waste money calling. If you will give me the opportunity and the manpower, I can train your people to be self-sufficient. When I worked for the city of Bonham, except for Greg here that did my electric, I did everything else. We repot our own pumps. Uh, you name it, I can do it. And I can train your people to do it. You're wasting money calling outside people at five, six, seven, eight hundred dollars an hour. It's ridiculous because you've got the equipment, but you don't have enough manpower.
True.
There are areas where you have to have two people. Because if, if it ever comes to TCEQ's law that you're using one man in a confined space, changing chlorine by himself, or in a dish by himself, or in a high place, or out at that wastewater plant, where you've got water a man can drown in, they're gonna wreck you big time. And you're talking twenty-five thousand dollars a day per violation. And that could go back ten years, it has to. But as far as utility goes, the chlorine residue was up. We've got plenty of chlorine. We are taking care of things as they happen. You brought me in here to train your people, but I'm not a damn magician. I can't just wiggle my nose and everything goes great. This city didn't get in this shape over a lo- a short period of time, and you're not gonna cure it over a short period of time. So give me the lab to do it, and it'll get done.
Got a question. The flush valve out on fifty and whatever the sewer plant road is.
Sewer plant road.
Yeah. Um, where, where are we at on that? Do you know?
I have gotta get that. I was gone Friday when Paul got done. I haven't talked to him yet. I will know in the morning.
Okay. But you're aware of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Volunteer fire department.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, as of January of twenty twenty-four, uh, our Ladonni Volunteer Fire Department, they had six medical emergencies. And they had, uh, that was for, uh, one landing zone that was required. And for, uh, the month of January, they had a just tot- not just, but they had a total of six service calls, so. And that's from your, uh, fire chief, Grady Howard.
Thank you. Uh, no. Administrative department.
No report.
Huh?
No report.
No report. Okay. Police department.
No report, other than Andy being sick.
He's still sick?
The other day he was. I haven't talked to him in a week.
Old business, events and activities at city hall. Who put this on the agenda, do you know?
Old business, uh, do we have anything written on that yet?
Yeah, there's proposed ordinance and as well.
Pardon me? I'm sorry, is that what you sent?
Well, I, I looked and I searched the wrong day. I thought I'd send it over the second, but I actually sent it the sixteenth. And I sent it back today. Um, seem to look at it and see what it, if it does what you talked about. And also, there's a, there's a, a couple of temporary use permits because that's one of the, one of the problems that sometimes cities have, is they pass an ordinance that requires this form, or that form, or the other form. The ordinance gets passed, the citizen comes in, the form's not available. So there are two, there are two forms for temporary use, uh, consistent with what we talked about. And, yeah, if you haven't read it, you probably need to read the ordinance and then say, either does or it doesn't do, or ask some questions about it.
Did everybody get a chance to read it or not?
I did read it, yes.
I didn't. I wouldn't have given it to you.
One of the thing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You did. So, I guess since you didn't read it, you wanna have time to read it?
Well, there's, if y'all, I mean, whatever, I mean, was it just to say or?
How'd you feel about the, when you read it?
Uh, I would like to abstain from it, if, if we're both, so.
Debbie?
No. I think we're gonna enforce it.
Well, no, that's what it's for, though.
Yeah.
Is to do this.
Yeah.
Enforce it with this paperwork.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good with the paperwork, too. So do we wanna vote, uh, ahead and?
What does it say?
Yeah, I'll.
I do. You want me to?
Yeah, can she read it?
Well, she can, as a matter of fact.
Are we gonna get to know what it says before you vote on it, so we know what you're voting on? Don't answer, as usual.
Is all this, I thought we were just talking about uptown, but all of it's uptown?
Basically, it's wherever the city owns property, what I'm understanding.
There's, there's a, there's a use of a term called the central district, which I never could understand. And if you're gonna do this, you need to find what that means.
You hadn't read it either, though?
If it's the area around the plaza here.
The mayor hadn't read it either, so.
She hadn't read it. She's wanna read it.
Huh?
I've read it, what?
You haven't read it either?
Yeah, I did, yeah. I read it when you sent it to me, on the email.
So instead of taking the time since she hadn't read it?
Yeah, I was, I was what I'm saying. If you hadn't read it, I mean.
I'd like to table it then.
I'd like to table it then.
You can keep that copy.
Okay, okay.
You wanna make a motion to table?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
Make a copy, please.
Yes.
Till next meeting? I'll second it.
All in favor, Jan?
Uh, I'm abstaining from that particular thing.
No, we're just tabling it now, I mean, it don't.
Okay, table, then I'll table, yeah.
Debbie? Table. Greg? All right.
I think, the next agenda, I want you to put this and you table it. Instead of it just saying, events and activity at City Hall, you need to add some language on it that says, uh, temporary permits to regulate that. So, when people read it, they'll know, there's, there's something else going on other than us, us talking about it.
It's, uh, the agenda for verbiage.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, B, ordinance for water sewer fees and rates study.
Have you heard from them?
Yes, I did, and it was, um, downright confusing what she had to say. Because, uh, she wanted to know what kind of, uh, people we had talked to. And, uh, it was all actually, in my way of thinking, for a big city, not a small town like ours. I will forward you the email if you want me to.
Please.
I will.
Because.
Anybody else want?
For, for what I understand, Honey Grove did, that's correct?
Yes, please, 'cause I didn't know anything.
This is, this is a rate study, if, if you do it, if you hire somebody to do it, they're relatively expensive. This is a group that did it for free, they did it for Honey Grove. So, you might wanna call and talk either to the mayor or the city secretary over there and say, how did y'all ask? There's, I think, five questions or so?
Yes.
That's asked as a, as a precursor or a condition to them engaging in that water study. And until those get asked, you're not gonna get the cer- or till they get answered. So my thought is, talk to some people down the road here and ask them how they did that. And Sally Wright's the city secretary there, and she's the one that, she's the one that probably answered those questions, and she's a pretty helpful person, so you could, you could ask her.
I can call her, because like I said, when I read that, I thought, I don't see how this pertains to Ladona.
Yeah, but it's pretty important right now, because we need this to look at our water rates.
Well, I understand that, but, um, when you read the questions, you'll understand.
I didn't get anything, so, yeah, definitely, there you go.
Okay, new business. Water sewer status update.
Are y'all still gonna table that, or what?
Oh, the B. Y'all be sending anybody emails, copy of the email that I had?
They doing anything on the water sewer rates?
It needs to be voted on.
Yeah, we get, we gotta vote on that ordinance. So I'll make a motion, we table it till we talk to Honey Grove and get better understanding.
All in favor, Jan? I'm sorry, second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jan?
Aye.
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 Okay. Water sewer status update.
Need an update? I have talked to several of my colleagues. One of them does seminars for EPA as well as TCEQ. He's trying to get his calendar set so that he can come down here and take a look at our wastewater plant, and see if he can help me, uh, see how to get it under control. I'll address it further when I get to my talk, okay? But as of right now, as I call them, these are my big guns, and there's three of them. And they're all double A instructors, just like I am, and we've worked together for quite some time. And this gentleman knows more than really fit in my head. As I said, he does seminars for EPA, so he's big, big. And he's gonna come down here and spend a day with me, and look things over, and see what we can do to make everything work better. And you'll be sorry when I read my report, when I get to the talk.
Charles got a question. Do you wanna elaborate any on the sludge that's in the sewer?
I will, uh, in my pocket here.
Be in the, okay. Whenever the guy gets free.
Oh, so not tonight?
He's gotta get his calendar set up so that he can come down and spend a day.
So, you wanna, you wanna wait for everything until that point in time?
No, sir, we can't wait.
No, 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 I'm saying till you talk to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, I make a motion, we table this till Charles is able to consult with, uh, the person that is coming in.
Do I have a second? One second, thank you. All in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, B, Upper Trinity City of La Dama, Bonita Mutual Aid Update from UTRWD. Is there another?
Got anything on, uh, Upper Trinity?
I have not been presenting any kind of agreement at all.
So, we're waiting on them?
Yeah, I, I, my understanding was they were gonna, they were gonna draft something and send it over. We're gonna ch- get a chance to look at it and agree to it, and I haven't done any.
So, uh, make a motion, we table this until Upper Trinity gets back with us.
One second.
Is, is there a person that I could call over there to ask, they're working on this?
I would try to go through Doug Gainway's, through everything. Um, he may not be able to answer any question, but he can.
Maybe he can direct me.
Direct you to who that.
Excuse me.
Let me second it, not a, okay. All in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, D, updating, no, excuse me, Water Department Billing Method, including water reading and data recording.
Good evening. I'm not exactly sure how this works, am I supposed to just go? I say I'm not exactly sure how this works, am I just supposed to go?
Well, you presented this with several different things on meter reading.
Yeah, as far as a procedural sample, all right. Um, uh, there's a, I, there's a difficulty potentially with, uh, the way, uh, people get billed. And I could understand, uh, there's an ordinance, and, and, but what happens is, if a person gets billed less than the two thousand, uh, rate, uh, where they're, where they're gonna be billed for, for so many, uh, gallons for the, for the minimum amount of the, uh, of their billing, then if, if that, uh, reading is not correct, then over time, what happens is, you're gonna end up paying twice for the same water. Once, once it get, it, once it gets caught up. So as an example, and I went in to, uh, talk to Diane a while back. I looked at my, uh, bill, uh, for, on one twelve, which was for December, and it was nine hundred gallons. So, I paid that bill, and I would, I would be paying for two thousand gallons, or, or, or the, the value of two thousand gallons based on the way the billing is. So then, I, I, I showed her the, uh, bill that I had on twelve six, which would have been for November, and it's, it's in your packet there. Oh, and by the way, I printed out your packets myself, because I was trying to save, uh, the city money on, on, on printing. I, I, I really appreciate the fact that, uh, Greg brought that up at the last meeting, so all your packets are printed by me. And that bill was nine hu- nine hundred gallons. So then, I looked back, uh, and it's amazing, I had these things. Then I looked back at my eleven ten bill, or, or eleven seven bill, and that was for nine hundred gallons. Now, this one was estimated. And then, and then I showed her the picture that was also in the, uh, packet. So, you see the small pictures, this is the enlargement of it, you just take that and pass it around. And it was that, and it was at that point where I was, uh, told that I would have to bring it to the, uh, city council. And I was essentially shut down. Although, just prior to that, if you look at the second page, I was given some information on, on, on the readings, uh, that, that were in the, uh, in the system. So at that point, uh, a- again, uh, this is something that I, I, I'm, I'm here tonight not because I wanna be, I like to make that claim. I, I was, I was told I had to do. So at that point, I, I went home and tried to, tried to come up with some type of, uh, a matrix to, uh, what was going on. So I could come here tonight. So I put together a, and you'll see it in there, uh, a, a sheet for information concerning my account. But then you'll see that it's a handwritten sheet in there. And I presented it to, uh, Diane. And then she got back to me, you can see a little note on the bottom there, that the, uh, city attorney left a message that I had to, uh, fill, uh, fill out a PIA to get the information on my own account. And prior to that, the day of the, uh, which would have been the twenty ninth, I, I, I also had to fill out the form to, I was given the form to fill out so I could come to the meeting tonight. And then I guess that, uh, form went to you, sir, uh, uh, and as I understand it from her, she inquired to you, uh, prior to whether or not I could get this information without putting in a, a PIR?
I think that's right.
Okay. So now, I, uh, am I allowed to ask, are you billing for all this?
Yeah, if I get a call, I get a, a bill.
Okay, okay, so it's like a fifteen, is it a fifteen minute minimum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right, so, we, uh, now, I, I filled out the application for PIR. And it's essentially this, this page that we have over here, but it was with no information on it. So now, when I filled out the PIR, did she send it to you to, or, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, so now we're down to, uh, two, so now we're to two times that, uh?
No.
Well, that would, okay, and that's still part of the first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, so I got the information, uh, back. And what I would like to know is, Diane, uh, when, when people inquire about their bills, do you do any sanity check as far as, uh, uh, what, what's charged and, and what's on the account? And just, just to see if, uh, things, uh, look at, uh, if, if some, if there's something that looks kind of out of whack to you that might.
The system whistles if it's too li- too low or too high. And I have Paul go back and reread them.
Oh, well, I mean, like, when you got this report back, did you just send it to me, or did you, uh, uh, review it yourself to, uh, just to do a sanity check on it?
It's in the computer.
This is the one that asked for the information that you wrote down on the report?
Yeah, it's in the computer, so you all read it down to you.
So it was in the computer?
The RBS system.
So it would, it would whistle to you, or?
When you put in the numbers from the meter readings, it whistles. If it's too high, and it'll whistle, if it's too low, or it'll whistle, it'll ask if.
Oh, I understand that, but this report was based on you pulling, uh, pulling, uh?
There's a screen, there's a screen on the RBS system that says readings, and when you put the readings in, it's on a page in there.
All right, so when I got this, I noticed that the September bill was also nine hundred gallons. So, I'll, four months in a row, it's nine hundred gallons, and, and one of them was estimated, and that didn't throw up a red flag, uh, about the, the bill?
The October bill was estimated.
Oh, I know, but the other three weren't. So, when you look at them combined.
I just don't make these numbers up. You can go through here and look at all of them.
I'm not trying, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to say anything, I'm just trying to point out that this, this, uh, this doesn't, uh, cause, uh, I, I don't, uh, somebody to, uh, to check it, that there, there's, there's something, uh, in there. I, I, but the mathematical probabilities of four, uh, water bills in a row being exactly nine hundred gallons, with one of them being estimated. And, and then, you put the, you put the note on the bottom here, January twenty fourth, eleven thousand three hundred gallons. Did you hear any whistles on that?
Yes, and it's the one highlighted for him to go reread, and he reread it, and it was the same.
But, does it, but what about the difference between all of these, uh, billings? There, there's not something that's kind of strange about this at all? That I, uh, that I'm using nine hundred gallons a month, I mean, do you realize this bill is approximately four times as month as much as the previous four, uh, months combined?
I'll just go by with the numbers on it.
Okay.
I'll make that decision.
Well, but, uh, this, this speaks to what I was just talking about. If, on the, on the minimum billing of two thousand gallons, if you charge the person for less than two thousand gallons, and he's actually used more than two thousand gallons, then when you, uh, when, when everything gets balanced out, he ends up paying for that difference twice. He, he's gonna, he's gonna be paying for a certain amount of the water two times.
I was under the impression, I may be wrong, that two thousand ga- gallons was the minimum.
Oh, it is. But if you, but if you charge somebody less than the minimum, and he used more than that, then when the whole thing gets, gets settled out at the end, he'd end up paying twice for the same water. Because it, it, and, and I'm not trying to say anything was wrong or in the system. I don't want, I, I prefer we just didn't go there. But the thing is, I, I'm, I'm ending up, what was, what's funny is, uh, so, so far, so we're like two, uh, sixty-two, six, uh, fifty with you as far as your fees for the, uh, for, for that, right? For this? Okay. The, uh, the difference here of forty-four hundred gallons is what I feel my, my account should be credited for, is only like about thirty-eight bucks. And we, we just, we, we, we just spent six, at least sixty-two fifty. And we, we just, we, we, we just spent six, at least sixty-two fifty, uh, trying, trying to figure out what's going on with this. And I, I just, 'cause I, I don't, uh, uh, it's, I don't know how we can explain nine hundred gallons, nine hundred gallons, nine hundred gallons, nine hundred gallons, four months in a row, with one of them being estimated, then, all of a sudden, eleven thousand three hundred gallons. And that doesn't seem kind of, uh, kind of, kind of strange. I mean, I take a lot of, uh, showers, but, uh... Okay, no, I can, that, that's a sanity check here, uh, uh, on the thing. So I don't... I, I, I'd like some consideration on my water bill because, well, based on, uh, based on this, I think there would, there was something awry in the system, uh, somewhere. And I, I'm not trying to point fingers or blame, but it seems to me when, uh, uh, how much approximately did, did you guys write off on, on that water? Uh, write off, or when you wrote off all of the, all of the debt from all of the people in, in the system that, that were ever aware? Approximately, just throw me a number.
That would be something Dana would have to tell you.
Okay. Well, I do, I guess I feel that a person who has been, who has paid his water bill and trash pickup since nineteen eighty-eight religiously, keeps a, keeps a credit balance and has never been late, ought to have a little bit of consideration, uh, 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 should, should receive a little, probably a little bit more consideration than the people who you wrote, uh, the water bills off, especially when, when I can show some, uh, documentation here that something, uh, something strange happened o- over that time period, this time period. All, all of a sudden, a person just, uh, and then you look at, uh, the, the, uh, the amounts up above that. It was the usage that this is Diane also gave me. I don't, I, I don't think I, again, if, uh, if you give me a, a credit of forty-four hundred gallons, I'd only, I'd only be paying for those forty-four hundred gallons once. If you don't, I'm gonna pay, I, I have to pay for it twice, and I don't think that's right. City, uh, the, the city gets, uh, the city gets exactly its money for what I, uh, for what, uh, I've used. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying eleven thousand three hundred gallons is, is wrong. So...
Have you been on vacation at all during any of that time?
Yeah, oh, now, the thing is, I, I have to give Diane a compliment. Because, uh, it'd be kind of hard, it would be hard pressed to find somebody who's probably harder on her overall. But she picked it up on her own. The fact that I, uh, that I put my, um, uh, si- a system on, uh, vacation, which you could do twice, uh, once a year. And she picked it up that somehow I was charged during those two months, and she credited my account. So I'd like to give credit where credit is due.
Two months.
Yeah, two mo- yeah, two months. And she picked that up on her own. So I think that's a good thing.
Can I ask you another question?
Oh, sure.
On your bills here, I see that we gave you a credit of six fifty-two here, with a total due of five hundred ninety-five. How do you use that much water?
I don't, that, that's a credit balance, ma'am. I, that's why, though, I mentioned that in advance. I, I, I paid, uh, upfront.
He keeps a credit on his...
Oh, he keeps a credit up here?
Yeah. So in, in other words, you, right now, you owe me.
Well, I was wondering how you was using that much water.
Oh, no, no. Anyway, I'd like some consideration on, uh, on my water bill. And, uh, we spent much, uh, we've already spent too much time on this and, and money in the fact that, uh, most likely, I'll say it that way, because, did, uh, did Diane, uh, uh, sir, uh, inquired to you about, uh, something that I wanted to post on, uh, about, uh, tonight and about my bill situation?
I'd be more specific than that if you're talking to me.
I asked her if I could, uh, list something that had all the, uh, that had all my, my information about this thing tonight and a copy of the, uh, okay, seriously, I asked her if I, uh, could post a copy of the, um, item that, item to be put on the agenda on, on the bulletin board over there with, with the cover sheet.
Oh, I think so.
Okay, so, uh, so you saw that, and you, okay, so you said no. Okay, so then, uh, how much are we up to as far as attorney's fees then?
You, you did the calculation.
Well, it, okay, well, it's, it's, it's three times.
Well, should we add in the fifteen minutes right now?
Absolutely.
Well, uh, absolutely, because, like I pointed out when I first came here, sir, I'm here because I was told I had to be here.
Well, did she say you had to be here, or she say it's an agenda item? And if you wanna present, you can.
Well, I don't, well, the thing is, when I, when I first started...
I'm not gonna sit there and argue back and forth with them.
Sure, I understand.
'Cause you can't make them understand.
Understand.
Well, wait, the thing is, all, the thing is...
No, no.
So, so, uh, all right. So, so, uh, tell me, Diane, 'cause, 'cause you started it. How, how do you feel about this town and the people in it?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Well, well... Last, last week, we had the last...
I think that's getting off topic.
No, I don't think so, 'cause you, you, you broached it. You broached it. So I, okay, so you're saying, you, 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 you mentioned something?
Uh, that needs to stop.
There's no need to argue.
Oh, I'm not...
Would it be fair to take off that hundred dollars?
She's not supposed to be speaking.
That thousand gallons...
This is bill. It's not bills.
All right, the, the...
You can let them talk if you can.
Okay, the easy, uh, there, there's a lot of ways we could do this. The easy, the, the easy way, what I would recommend, and I would be just totally thrilled with, is you take, uh, you, you credit my account for forty-four hundred gallons of wa- of, the, the dollar value of forty-four hundred gallons, which would then bring up, uh, uh, the amount of what, uh, on those four months to two thousand. And therefore, when you come down to the bottom, and, and I paid the balance of this, whatever it was, four thousand, then everything comes out to be right. I don't pay extra, and you got paid for every drop that, uh, that I used. Uh, there, there's a whole bunch of different ways you could do this to make it a lot harder than, uh, than it is. Because, and that comes out to be about thirty-eight dollars, which most likely is gonna be less than what, what the attorney's fees for, uh, for this thing is gonna be.
I don't know.
That's why I...
If we keep going, it's gonna even out.
Well, that's what I said. Uh, I'm, I'm specifically talking about the things that were related to this. And that's why I said most likely, because I know how you guys are.
Yeah, us guys are always...
So, I, I'm, so, I, I'm assuming you're gonna, you're, uh, can we assume that for the, for the four things that you had to check on for me, that it'd probably come out to be fifteen minutes anyway?
Probably.
Okay, so that's sixty-two fifty. So I'm asking for a, a credit on my account of... I have it here somewhere, it's like thirty-eight something, which would be the, uh... Oh, thirty-eight, uh, I'm asking for a credit applied to my account of thirty-eight fifty. And again, if we do that, I will, I will have paid for every drop of water that I used only once. The other way, some of it, I'm gonna pay twice. So, do I get to propose, uh, propose a motion, or what?
No, you don't.
Okay, I didn't pay you so.
But if you're done...
Well, well, I'm done up to the, are there any questions?
Yeah, I got one. When was the eleven thousand gallons? Was during the big freeze?
No, it was not, sir.
Okay.
And I, and I, yeah, I'm not saying, that was the bill that was, uh, uh, that I received on two sixth. And I al- and see, but the city is very kind in that if you do have a water leak, they will adjust your, uh, uh, bill accordingly. So it's to my, uh, it, it would have been to my advantage to, to say I had a leak and I fixed it myself. Uh, but it, uh, it didn't happen. So, are there any other questions for anyone? Okay. And I would just ask you, uh, Greg, if you would, uh, reclose yourself from voting because, rather than, I don't wanna go into it, I just would like to ask you to...
Ask.
Oh, no, just it.
I heard you.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay. I'm on this agenda topic also.
Oh, okay. What, do we wanna, okay, uh, would you prefer we, we wrap this thing up before we, we go to somebody else on, oh, okay. Oh, okay, okay, come on, I guess.
It's evidence on your bill and my bill and everybody else's. So, Jody Rowell, three ninety-seven, Redner, again. Now, I've been with Water Company the Chau for five months. The last three months, my bills have been wrong. Uh, did you include this in there like you, I gave it to you?
I did, I did it, and you know what it is, I didn't get down that far.
Uh, so if you look, it's in there. Uh, one month, like this, they read it eight hundred, uh, gallons, which was wrong, so we fixed it. The second month, she didn't even put it in the computer. We had to come up and ask for it, 'cause we did not receive a water bill. It was underneath her sticky note, so we never got a bill. The third month, we wound up with another eight hundred gallon. So when I looked at the meter, we actually used twenty-one hundred gallons. So once again, we came up, had her fix it, or we paid a little bit more money. Because otherwise, we'd be in the same situation he's in, in four or five months, where we were billed eight hundred gallons, eight hundred gallons, eight hundred gallons. And then all of a sudden billed eleven thousand gallons. So, here's another case you can look at to help decide what the right thing to do with this gentleman is. I take care of mine every month because I can't trust the guy to come look at the meter. Yes, I do have a, yes, you asked me the other day when you were being smart ass to my wife, telling her she don't take enough showers.
I don't take that kind of crap from nobody.
I guess in the future, there, there seems to be, uh, possibly a, a personality, uh, a conflict between the city secretary and myself. Uh, maybe, uh, could, uh, could we possibly also agree that if I do have a, a question on a, uh, on a, on a bill and I, that I would like to discuss, then, uh, we can do it with somebody else there also. Like, Greg, you're in the office sometime, I'm, I'll, rather than discuss it with her, maybe I could leave a note and we could make sure that there's, there's more than one person, rather than we have a he said, she said type situation. Would, would, would that be okay?
Well, one thing is, she's the only one that knows what their R S B does. I have no, I have no problem with more than one person here.
Well, I, I was, I was meaning strictly from, uh, an observation, uh, standpoint, uh, because it's like, um, she says, uh, uh, she says things happen a certain way, and I say that they happen a certain way. But if there are only the two of us there, what, what happened? I'm, I'm just saying that, uh, if, if it could be, well, like, uh, Greg, I'll give you an example. Sometimes you're, and you're in the office, or a, a lot of times you're there. I'll just make sure, if it's okay, that there's somebody else in the office when I come in and have to, uh, uh, talk to her if there, if there is another, uh, bill issued, that's all, if, if, if that's okay. Otherwise, we're, we're, we're gonna be doing this, uh, hopefully, well, from now on, I got, I got news for you. I, I'm gonna read my bill every mon- I'm, I'm gonna read, uh, my bill every month and, and check it against the, uh, meter.
Wouldn't you have to do it on the same day that her meter's read?
Well, the thing is, if, uh, I don't...
Read it every day. Read it once a week.
Well, the thing is, if I look at the meter, uh, I, I, how, how far after, uh, the meter gets read do the bills get, uh, put, uh, uh, mailed? Or it's like, I'll give you an example, it's like the, um, well, the twelve-six bill. It's, it says, uh, twelve-six on there. When was that read? 'Cause it, it got mailed out on the seventh, so maybe I'd get it on the eighth. So if I go out there the next day, it should be, uh, I'm not, I'm not gonna be horsey about it. It should be within a couple of hundred gallons of, uh, what you say, and based on the time lapse, you, uh, uh, you can figure that out, uh, I, I could, I could estimate it. So, so as long as it's a couple of hundred, if it's a, a couple of hundred gallons, it's not gonna make that much of a difference. It's just that I'm, I guarantee you, it's never gonna happen again that, that it's eleven thousand, uh, gallons. Uh, well, I can't say that, uh, because this just popped up. But I'll be able to read my meter against the thing, and, and it, and it shouldn't be, and I'll just, well, bring it up. So, I don't have anything else to say. Are there any questions from anybody? All right, it's, uh, I'd appreciate it if somebody could, uh, make a motion then to, uh...
So you're asking for a credit of thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents?
Yeah, I'm asking for a, a credit of thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents, which, again, only means that I'm paying for every gallon that I get instead of this, this, or, i- if I'm, uh, required to pay this, then I'm paying twice for those forty-four hundred gallons. And I'm gonna have to, and, and then, this, uh, I, I'm never gonna have to appeal this to the, uh, the P U C and let, let them look into the whole thing. Which, you know, I, I spent more, uh, you wanna talk about your time, sir? I spent so much time on, on...
I really don't. I really don't wanna talk about it.
Okay, okay. I, I don't blame you. But, anyway, I spent so much time on this that it, it, it was, it was a heck of a lot more than, than the thirty-eight fifty is, but there, there comes a point where you just have to, uh, finish it out. But I, I don't appreciate, never mind. Anyway, that's what I would like, and I think it's fair, a thirty-eight dollar fifty cent, uh, credit on my account.
Thank you.
So, when do you determine, uh, that?
It's not my place to determine it. It's the council's place.
All right, well, I was looking, he was the mayor and the leader of the council. Who should, uh, does, does somebody have to pro- uh, propose a, a motion? And can, can that be done now, or, uh, I guess what I need to know is, what, what are the next steps? So I know if they're, if they're followed, so I can, uh, uh, track it.
Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Well, actually, I mean, he's done making his, uh,
Presentation.
Presentation about the, about your bill, so you're, you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, the, I don't see is, was it just for his? Or was it?
Well, that was, no, that one on the back of the page.
Oh, okay, did not know that.
No, that's what he, what Jody was saying when he got up there. He, that's his.
Oh, okay.
So it's kind of one in the same. Yeah.
I have some... Can we, do you want me? If you look here, it says twenty-eight sixty. That's the sequence he found. So this is, um, from January all the way to July.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but I mean, it's bringing it up about the billing system. What do you mean on all of it?
Well, that's what I'm asking is, is see, just for Mr. Dudley and Mr. Rowell.
Only we can add it in the motion, you know, whatever he did do. He needed to do that or whatever, but, I mean, it was for, basically, the whole billing system. You know, we got issues with it.
Okay.
But...
So before we make, we need to discuss whatever the other party is before we make an, a motion, right?
And, well, I mean, they were just, the presentation was just bringing it up about the billing system and how it works. You know what I'm saying?
So... Is there anything else? We've got something else that goes with this.
Do we need to take any action on anything else? Is that what you're asking?
On that line item?
Yeah. Is, is this, is this, is C all, it was pretending it was those two water bills?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I thought it was asking about that letter, that, that sixty day or thirty day letter?
No.
Okay, okay. And if we can have payments, like, that's not this, okay?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not, uh, no, no, that's not any part of that.
Okay.
Um, one thing I will say is that everything she's got over there is through R B S. Meter readings, of course, city employee, but, um, I've always thought there was a, kind of a crazy thing about the two thousand gallons, but it is what it is, it's in the order, so we can't get into it.
So, is it okay then if I do make a motion then, or are we still in discussion?
So, Mr. Rowell, Mr. Rowell's not asking for a credit, or he's just-
No.
No, I paid more money, I owe more.
He owed more, so he paid more.
Okay, okay.
No.
So, actually, it's just Mr. Duffy is asking for a credit?
Yes.
Okay, I'm straight on.
But this, again, this same situation is possibly won't happen again, because we don't estimate them. R B S does. Is that correct?
But like, October, Deesha said just use the month before, so you, there's a place in there that says you wanna use the month before, and you say yes, or thirty days, you can average the past.
Otherwise, the reason I said that is because we did not have anybody to read the water meters.
Right.
But, but also, that's, we don't just say, oh, put nine hundred gallons on there.
And it'll predict, like, it'll, it'll do the meter reading.
Right. It, it goes back and looks at the previous months or whatever.
But other than October, he, she had a, a reading to put in, insert.
Yes, they're all right here.
Correct. And they just happened to come up at nine hundred gallons, by meter readings. Now, if he's out there reading the meter, be, uh, reading the meters, I don't know how he can come up with a number that makes it nine hundred gallons for three months, if it's not, you know what I'm saying? I mean, he's not gonna be able to calculate, oh, I, I know what it was last month, or this, or that, and this is how much it's gonna take to get nine hundred gallons. No, he's not doing that.
Are you talking about Paul?
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, I, I, I still feel like, uh, those are correct, but, again, we didn't have an estimating one in there. And that throws R B S in a loop, I mean, it drives it crazy. So-
So, could I make a motion then regarding this, or more discussion?
More discussion?
She wants to make a motion.
I know, is there any more discussion, do, any more questions about the end?
No, I don't ask, I'm, Debbie?
I'm good.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to get this settled and start all over, uh, on Mr. Duffy's account, to give a credit of the thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents, where it'll be correct from this point on.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
We just made a motion, we've already done it.
Yeah, she read that.
It passed, yeah, it passed.
All right. D, updating and maintenance of information on the city marquee.
That's about the, uh, marquee, I, I was wondering if possibly we could, um, either take all of the numbers off, so nobody could get confused. Well, I'll give you an example, uh, our mayor, the Feeding Fane County has an eight next to it. But the last time, uh, uh, the, the, the Feeding Fane, uh, came to, to the area, it was on the sixth. And I, I, I asked the city secretary if she could get somebody to do it, I, I, and she said she would try to, to change it, or, or take it down. And they were unable to, I brought it up here, uh, and I made a mistake during the citizens' comments. Well, I was just trying to explain to you about the, the importance of the numbers. Because there's, there's an awful lot of people that, that, that take advantage of that program. That to give you an example, on an average month, there's, there's about four hundred and twenty-five people, a hundred and thirty-five families, and about fourteen thousand pounds of food get distributed, uh, using sixty-three, uh, service hours from twenty-six volunteers. And there's a lot of, there, there's a lot of needy people in this town, and in the surrounding area, that, that, that are looking forward to that and, and need that, and I, and, and I think it's very important that we update the, um, uh, the, the marquee out there on, on a regular basis.
May I say something?
Oh, sure, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I-
Before I was mayor, the marquee was never updated like that. And if you're needy, trust me, you're gonna be knowing exactly when the date is.
It was updated all the time, we updated it all the time.
At the time-
For the chamber.
It was the cham, we were told it was the chambers-
No, 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 it, we updated it for the city, we always had any city, council, or anything on there.
Again, we were told it was the chambers marquee, not the cities.
No, it's the cities.
Okay, I think maybe we're talking about the same thing two different ways, that, uh, if, if it's on city property, I would think it's the, the cities, or whoever owns it, that the chamber used to update it. And then-
No, let me correct you.
Okay.
As mayor, all those years, we made sure, and I'm, I'm sure Deesha might have backed, we, I don't know, but we always tried to keep the marquee updated about any meetings, any city events, or anything. It was a city updated deal, we got information around from the rodeo association, we always, uh, any event that, uh, was important to the community, we shared it with any school events, that Ricky Beeler wanted up there, anything, so-
Oh, yeah, I, I was just referring, uh, specifically, that's hard to say, uh, about the, the feeding thing and how important it is. And I just, uh, I, I just get really upset, uh, when, when I drive by that thing, and, and I see that, that the, the date isn't updated on that, and there's, uh, because there's, uh, plenty of volunteers that would be willing, uh, uh, to help, and, and then that goes back to where, um, some volunteer, there were, there was a volunteer that was doing it for a long time, and, uh, uh, they were stopped, and then they, they volunteered to do it again, and they were told, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, li, uh, potential liability issues were, were not, uh, were not, would not allow him to, uh, to do that anymore. But, uh, Mr. Attorney, sir, isn't there such a thing as a, a, a waiver of, uh, liability that, that a person could sign and, and hold the city harmless, uh?
Yeah, but you're, that's not the kinda liability you're worried about at the, at the marquee, you're not worried about somebody suing the city over falls and damage.
No, 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 I'm talking about falling down.
Falling.
If it's on the city property, it doesn't make any difference who's out there. The city's always gonna have the responsibility, if the city owns that land, or that marquee is, it's the city's problem. And so, if there's unsafe, if there's ice on it, if the concrete's busted, somebody trips on it, it don't make any difference if it's out there messing with the marquee, or if they're just walking around.
But, uh, well, okay, now maybe you can answer my question.
Maybe.
Um, if a, uh, if a person volunteered to update the, the marquee using, uh, the equipment that's out there, and they signed a, a waiver, uh, uh, for liability of, of the city, which happens in contracts all the time, uh, that, that he was, that, that he would hold them, uh, that they would be, uh, that they would hold the city harmless, in the event that they did anything during the execution of this volunteer, uh, event, uh, operation. Is, uh, is that something that could be done?
Sure, but that's not the only issue, and it's come up right now, who actually owns that property? Is it an official city posting? Is it something that the Chamber of Commerce does? Because if it's an official city event, then you got all sorts of constitutional problems to worry about, and I'm not worried about if somebody trips over the concrete or not. I'm worried about if the K K K decides to come up and post something on the marquee, because everybody else gets sued. So, the first thing you gotta decide is, who in the heck's running it out there? Who is it, is it this place, is it the chamber, who's responsible for that? And once that's done, then after the dust settles, you can say, okay, you can post on it, you can post on it, uh, everybody gets a car, whatever Oprah says, you get a car, you get a car, you get a car. But if it's a city function, the city has got to control it because of the constitutional issues, and that's not something that I've heard here yet.
Okay, the city was, I, just to say, the city always controls what went on the marquee.
Can I suggest that the city approves what goes on the marquee, and the volunteers allowed to do it with a waiver?
We did.
That, you know, that, that's certainly a, a possibility, that the, if, if the city doesn't have the resources to do it, then it gets approved, and then it, once again, hoo-bah, are we gonna, gonna have a marquee meeting once a month? Because the date's the sixteenth, and we're not gonna have a meeting till, who's, how's that gonna do, how's that gonna happen?
It's worked very-
Who the city can approve it?
Well, it's worked very smoothly, you know, we're, we're a small town, it, it's worked very, very smoothly for, for years and years and years. Uh, there's, there, uh, there's not that many events in this town, and, and, and the, and the people kinda, kinda work together to, uh, do it, I, I, uh, what I'd like to see is, is just a way, uh, uh, cause it's a really, it's a really important, I think, communication mechanism, uh, for the, you know, for the city, with the, uh, with the residents.
No, I am not, I am not.
Well, sure, a bad data, a wrong data, it's just not good data, it just isn't, whatever's out there, if it's wrong, needs to be fixed. But why don't we do this, why don't we all get together, decide who's gonna run it, and who's gonna put that data up, and how that needs to be approved, and, and then I'll suggest to, to this group, I'll suggest it for you, here's how that needs to work, there needs to be a point person on it to take care of it, and the data needs to flow through one spot, that's all I'm saying.
Excellent idea, now, along with that, there's something, um, that, that's related to this, where's Jason?
Well, in the past, we have done that.
But, but that's, he's, uh, he's, he has a related, uh, topic that, that has to do with this, it's later on down the agenda. Could we just, could, could we just, uh, include him in this conversation now, or you're gonna wait to open, uh, Jason? And that, that concerns the, uh, Feeding Fane, and then it concern, concerns the next one, is it all right?
It doesn't really matter, I mean, marquee's a marquee, doesn't have anything to do with Feeding Fane.
Well, I, I know, but, uh, here, okay, we'll, we'll just wait to look at, his, his-
We know Feeding Fane is important.
Yeah, oh, no, yeah, no, his, his was a, a, a more of a, an immediate nature, that's why, uh, okay, well, just, yeah, I'll, I'll-
We understand, we understand that that's important.
Okay, well, he'll be coming up next, I'd like to thank everybody for their time this evening, I, I think we made great, uh, great progress on this, and hopefully, it, all, all we need is a lot of people just doing a little bit, and we can make this happen. Uh, we, we've got some really great organizations in this town, uh, First United Methodist Church, uh, the Baptist Church, that, that, these, these people would be willing to help. So, all, I think all we need to do is, is ask them, anyway, thank you very much.
Who said that Paul was?
Before Paul was doing it part-time, I was doing it, you know, but if Paul, he, his priorities are water and sewer. I mean, you know, um, I understand marquee's important, I understand that completely, but we do have priorities, and if those priorities are met, then, you know, in order, there's no reason why he can't do it.
I sure say on days that he can't do it.
And he is a city employee.
Yeah, on days that, uh, he's not got too much to do.
Right.
Right.
But he, I mean, another, one of the problems was, they'd come up, not picking anybody in particular, where they'd come up, like, the day ahead of time, you know, and say, hey, we need this on there, you know, cause we got a meeting, you know, tomorrow, or two days from now, or whatever, they don't give you enough time to get everything taken care of. So... I'll come in on, on, on Friday and say, hey, I need this, cause we got a meeting on Monday. But yes, he was doing it.
E.
We haven't finished that one.
Still in discussion. Still in discussion.
Well, can we talk to Paul about?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, do we want to?
Take what, fifteen, twenty minutes? I mean, if all the wording was up there for him to put it up, he could just go and put it up.
Right, well, it's fifteen, twenty, thirty, thirty minutes, whatever, you know, it's not a lot, but, you know, you used to have to-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if anybody wants anything on the
That needs to go through Diane.
Marquee, we need to decide if it needs to be, um, weekly, or monthly, or-
Well, they, my opinion, and this is what's been done previously, they go to Diane, and say, hey, can you put this on the marquee? And she asks the mayor, or whoever, you know, hey, we need to get this on there, and, you know, it's, I don't think it's ever been a problem, you know? Um, and then we get the letters together, and, you know, somebody goes out there and puts it up.
Maybe we could put that as his job.
It, it's already there.
Okay.
We can ask him to do whatever we need him to do.
Okay.
You know, that's already there. And he does have a job description, but it also entails other items.
Right.
So... Make a motion to uh, have the, or, uh, I guess, utility, city utility person to, uh, keep the marquee updated, uh, within priorities.
With that, we want, we need to say, like, for everybody out here that's here, we need to say if we need them to bring it two weeks prior to, uh, their event, or if we need-
Yeah, they need to, they need, we need some ahead of time where it's not gonna get done.
Yeah, Greg, I'll just say, like, Ricky Beeler with the school, if there was something important there, we usually always had enough notice, they had a time to people get it up.
Right. And then you also have to put into consideration also, sometimes there's several things going on.
Well, the priority then, you gotta look at, see what-
And then, some of these take a couple of lines, you know, and that sign's only so big, but, understand, I mean, it, it hasn't been a problem.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Also, you want that in the letters.
Yeah. Tried to buy some the other day, but-
Yep.
So, do we need to say a timeframe that we need it so many days, so many weeks or days prior to-
I'd say if possible, yeah.
The event?
I'd say, uh, I'd say at least five days before the event, prior to the event.
Is that a good time?
I, I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I, I'm not sure.
I would say that most people, not to interrupt, but, I'm sorry, but I, just, most of the time, if there was an event, everybody knew, plenty ahead of time to get it up there, give people, you know, enough time to know a bit, like, fire department, or anything like that.
Boys ain't in, in the event that- If they don't get it up here within the five days, or whatever, then don't complain about it not getting put up there, cause-
And three days prior.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'll agree.
I was looking more at week, I mean, if, if something's gonna happen, you know, I mean, cause if,
Okay.
Realize if we were bringing it to you, we'd bring it to you a month ahead, I mean, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Um, cause you already know what's happening.
Yeah, most events, you know, way ahead of time, and can kinda plan it.
That's just after vote, and, I mean, and everything, we're gonna know, after eclipse, we're gonna know, um, so, I'd like for, you know, people to bring it at least, at least a week ahead of, you know, of the posting date.
Okay, seven days?
At least, yeah.
All right. Uh, so we make a motion to have the utility... Have the utility person update the marquee.
And then the city secretary has a list of all that, and she can tell him, you know, the day it needs to be taken down, next day, you know?
Right. With marquee request. From city secretary. City secretary. And, um, request must be made. Uh, seven days ahead of time?
I would say at least seven days, or, you know?
Yeah.
A lot of times they know before that, you know?
Because they give you two days, well, they give you...
Yeah.
Usually no sooner than that.
They bring it to you nine days.
Yeah.
I'd say no later than seven days ahead.
I'd say seven days prior to posting. That way they don't think, you're going to put it up immediately because they're going to have their event in seven days. I'm sorry, I missed my job.
Right, and not seven days prior to the event, seven days prior to...
When they want it posted.
When they want it posted, so the employee has time to fit it in the schedule.
Right. Okay. Oh, that's a motion.
Oh, did you change that to postage?
Yeah, it'd be seven days prior to posting.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Now, did you make a motion or second?
Greg did.
Greg did.
I second, you second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Debbie?
Uh.
Greg?
Aye.
E, annual audit of city, including name and date engagement for the auditor, current status of the audit, and expected completion date.
I'd ask for that to be on there, I don't know if I need to, there's nothing for me to speak on it other than asking for the answers to those questions. So I don't know if I need to come up there.
Has it been scheduled?
Diane?
And are...
He's not going to get here till March first, somewhere around that time. He's had to reschedule a couple times.
Estimated dates, March first?
That completion date, or is that when he's going to start?
That's when he's going to start.
Do you say why you said to change it?
Yes.
He's had, um, a water district he's working on, and it has to be out by March first.
And who is he?
Mike Ward.
Mike Warren?
Ward.
And it's a confirmed date, March first?
Uh, no action.
It's just discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, F.
No action.
Letters for lead and copper report from TCEQ violation. One, one of twenty twenty, and twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-two. And I believe Christie Rowell wanted to talk?
Not at all, no.
Lead and copper, we've got a TCEQ reg that's got to be done. Um, like ASAP. Uh, got to be a letter sent out to every, um, account. And, uh, so that is a, what's estimated cost on the stamps and all that junk?
Sixty-eight cents times three hundred and five is two hundred and something.
And then the paper...
Two hundred and fourteen.
So roughly, it can be three hundred...
Two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents.
Yeah, but then we got paper and ink and all that junk, so a dollar a page. Or a dollar, uh, letter, roughly, yeah. So we just need to approve that so we can get them sent out. And that's a pretty good job. We've done it before. Somebody just need to approve, I make a motion if we approved uh, up to a dollar and ten cents per, per letter to, for the uh, lead and copper report to be sent out.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Diane?
Aye.
Aye.
Debbie?
Uh.
Dece, you said aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, April eighth, solar eclipse day, safety and mitigation plan.
Good evening. Mayor, we are glad that you're here today.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Jason Deegan, this is Christie Rowell. Can you sing a duet? No.
Probably not.
I, um, Christie and I have been to several meetings related to the upcoming solar eclipse. And I provided some information here in an additional packet that, um, that we created and gave to the city council. Hopefully, have, you had a chance to review that? Awesome, that's, that's super. Then we won't have to talk about a lot of this, but we know that the solar eclipse is coming. And, um, a lot of times, we think, um, a small town that's not advertising some big event, you know, who would come to Ladonia? Well, I for one think Ladonia's a great place, I love this little town, and have a lot of hope and respect for the people that live here. And, um, because of this amazing natural phenomenon that's happening on April eighth, we're going to have people that will come to town. Um, I don't know how many. Um, we've been told by neighboring cities and the county to plan on at least two and a half times our city population, right? So that'd be around fifteen hundred people or so, right? So, so if we, um, if we had even just two or three hundred people show up, or six hundred people show up, um, we have to understand what we're going to do to, um, plan for that. And so we've provided some information here based on the meetings that we've had with uh, county emergency officials and things like that, so that we can, um, prepare for that event. A bunch of people come to town and they don't know where to park. And so they park in middle of the street, they park in people's yards, um, they cause traffic issues. They don't know where to use the restroom, so they find the nearest bush, whatever, I don't know. And, um, they don't know where to put their trash, right? Maybe they bring a picnic lunch or something like that, or they stop and they totally clear out the Dollar General, whatever. And they don't know where to put their trash because the little bins we have are overflowing. So what I've done is I've, um, you know, together, we created a document and we talked about a few key, um, discussion points, which is safety, uh, trash, restrooms, and location. I think if we can, um, figure out some, uh, ideas about safety, what we might be able to do with the trash, so that we're not picking up trash as a community for weeks and weeks afterwards. Um, gets blown away and we're chasing, um, Dorito bag wrappers or something like that all over town. Um, what we might be able to do as a city to provide restrooms so that people know where they can go to, um, the bathroom. Having an ADA compliant one would be, would be nice.
These are porta potties.
Yeah, porta potties.
Not opening the city hall or relying on just Dollar General, because that's not going to be sufficient. Um, we're also considering, or taking in effect, that a lot of people are going to find the fossil park as well. So a couple of bathrooms out there would probably be nice, as well as a dumpster of some sort, uh, in order to mitigate any hazardous waste and extra trash at that location as well. Um, as well as maybe a couple of city porta potties down here downtown, because they will come. Pig and Whistle has said that they were going to be open that day, um, but they can only, uh, serve up to a hundred and fifty people. Dollar General's going to be open. Not sure whether they're going to be prepared to have all enough food and all that sort of stuff there. We don't have a gas station here, so I'm not real sure what they're going to do about, you know, casing the microwave or something like that.
Why don't we have a gas station?
Uh, well, she, I don't, I don't know whether she's, I don't go in, I haven't been in there. Um, but I don't think she's a convenience store like a Seven-Eleven with a microwave and all that kind of stuff to heat up food, so... Um, those sorts of situations are what we probably, where we've been told, we need to consider. Just so that we don't have people knocking on people's doors, asking to use their restrooms, um, filling people's yards, or going behind what they think is a vacant place, but actually somebody lives there. Um, those kind of considerations, we'd like to, to know what the city plans or could possibly help us, um, put in action.
And by us, we're just a couple concerned citizens. We've been to these, some of these meetings, and, um, Greg, just like you, I kind of thought initially, because, I mean, when the last one happened in twenty seventeen or something, I went through my parents' area, and everybody went there to see there. And so we were going to have this big event when we came, you know, but nobody wants to come to Ladonia that particular, to my house. It's my house, it's not Ladonia, it's just my house. But, um, my family, because they're busy and doing other things, so my wife and I talked about it, and we were like, nobody's going to come here. But the more we got to know and understand what is really the potential of happening, we just really want to see what the city's plans are and what, excuse me, what they might be wanting or able, or, I don't know. Have there been any discussions as a city?
No.
Okay. So this is a good start, and it's just something that we, as concerned citizens, are, just interested people are trying to provide as a start and maybe a way to begin a plan. So there's a pretty good, um, footprint here. There's some material that's, um, here from, um, from Bonham, but, um, um, and other material that's from other areas that have had these solar eclipse previously. I'm part of a ham radio club, and we, um, had been discussing this in great detail, um, past several months. And they have described many similar experiences, small towns, um, getting completely overrun, unexpected and unaware, and, um, it was devastating to the town. Not, didn't destroy the town, but it was a very significant impact on them that could have been mitigated. So, um, at least to some degree, even if we plan for six hundred people and way more come, we're at least a little bit ahead of the game. So we have, um, proposed here, um, that the city, um, consider and take action on these following items, right? Provide two dumpsters of, or similar receptacles, something that can collect trash on a little bit larger, larger scale than a, you know, fifty gallon drum. Providing, uh, uh, four porta potties. I've checked around and I've gotten some prices on some of these, I think I included them, uh, in the packet as well. Uh, how much, uh, trash would be and porta potties would be, uh, those four. Um, also, maybe to identify any couple locations so that we can just let the city know, just, we're not going to broadcast this, but just letting the city know that, hey, if you're going to be here, then, um, you know, go to the square, go to the fossil park. That would be a good place, because what that does is it controls where, uh, accidents can happen and where we need to get emergency people to come, which we don't have in our city. Talking to the fire department, they all work and they're not planning on being here on, at that time. Um, also, um, maybe assigning somebody on the city council to work with the county and the, the fire department um, on emergency issues. And, um, maybe somebody who could talk with Abra Trinity and find out what their plans are for the bridge, so we know what's going to happen, if they're going to blow it up, the bridge that's by the fossil park. Um, they're talking about removing that, or, and so if they do that, that changes and impacts the traffic patterns and things like that. There's a lot of other things to consider, which I included in the packet. Um, you've all read that, so hopefully I will give you some ideas and some things to talk about. Um, are there questions? Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Christie?
Yeah, free throw.
Um, I think it's really important for us to, to just get in our heads, that this is in a four and a half minute event. This is, happens days before and days after, right? Um, I was talking to, um, in fact, it was, uh, the Rattles, they belong to a group that, um, of RVers, and there are actually, like, three hundred of them, are going to Paris, right? So they're going to be in Paris for their big event, but they're going to be here for a whole week. What are they going to do? And it's possible, it's not determined yet on their schedule, but it's very possible that they'll go to surrounding area sites. So maybe a couple days after or before, we'll have, you know, four, five hundred people, or a thousand people at the fossil park, or on the trails, or something like that. And we, we just want to be prepared for those things, so. Any questions, anything I can answer for you? We've been to, we've both been to these meetings, we've got lots of information up here we'd love to share with you.
Who do you consult with for the dumpsters?
About the radio grounds, you got a, there's a...
Yeah, the radio grounds might be a great idea as well.
Well, there's restrooms out there, there's a snack bar, uh, you got bleachers if they want to sit down or whatever.
Well, somebody would have to run that and be, you know, I don't know what safety issues they're concerned to have, but...
Since you don't have a police department, you're just about going to have to get the county to...
You can't just go out there, you have to get permission.
Yes. And, you know, that's a great, great point, Charles, is that, um, we have to get the county involved. Well, the county's super thin, and when we want to call, uh, you know, county...
They got two officers on the ship.
Well, they're, they are actually, because the path of this solar eclipse is eighty-eight miles to a hundred and twelve miles, they have actually suggested that you contact police forces from the west, i.e. Weatherford, Fort Worth, um, Palopinto County, and you hire their officers for that weekend or that day to come out, because we are not going to have, they've got the state park, they've got the forest rangers, they've got the gang wardens, they have the, um, of course, they have the, um, TDM, but literally, we are going to be very shorthanded. Fannin County does not have the coverage, and we already have Bonham that has created an event, and Honey Grove has created an event, that, that they're advertising. Okay, so they are already bringing people up. If you look on what's happening in Fannin County, there are people looking, saying, hey, where's the VRBO? Where are the campgrounds? Oh, I need a for-free campground, which there are sites that are out there that lead people to free places to stay. I don't know whether the fossil park is on one of those sites, but it probably will be after the solar eclipse event, because that's not monitored. So we are going to have people coming in this area, and it's going to be overflowing, and we're going to be the overflow. We're also on two major highways to get to these areas from the DFW area. So we're going to be a pass-through, and if traffic gets too bad, they're going to stop where they're at. So that's one of the concerns, because our country roads don't have shoulders. If it rains before, we're going to have muddy ditches. So there's going to be a lot of concern that we need to take into consideration. And just Jason and I can't create or organize at all. We can't, we can't fund it either.
Okay, who did you talk to about dumpsters?
So those dumpster prices, um, I only called the person that I knew that did dumpsters, so that was, um...
Jamie?
Okay.
With Town Hall?
Okay, that presents a problem, because if we bring a dumpster into town, it has to be through Republic.
Okay, that's okay, anywhere you get it, that's totally fine.
I'm just saying.
Oh, that's totally fine.
That's part of the rules, and that's fine.
That's great. Well, that, and that, yeah, that's collaboration, I love it, thank you.
So that we didn't, that we didn't know that part of this, this contract, so...
Yeah. Um, the potties, I called, um, Pat's Pump Service. That's where I got the pricing, and, um, she says that she has four. She does not have an ADA one, but what, the last meeting that Christie went to, they said that there were... They said that there will be people that will be going town to town and looking for non-compliant stuff. And then sue this too for, because you don't have an.
Just because.
Just because. So, again, nothing, nothing may happen.
And y'all said something about outside police departments. Police, um, are these gonna be free?
I wouldn't know, no.
You know what they charge for this kinda stuff?
I, I actually have a cousin that does, uh, outside.
I have a son that does.
Fifty, fifty dollars at least an hour.
Sixty, seventy-five.
And we have to, we'd actually have to provide them someplace to stay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, most of them just stay in their car, but.
Yeah.
Well, not for the whole weekend, they can't.
Yeah, they, they do. Uh, I mean, I know what they do.
That's right, the price is right.
For a hundred dollars an hour.
Fifty.
Well, I know, but some of them can go higher than that.
Oh, exactly.
I got two sons that.
Or special event, you're gonna pay seventy-five.
If you're gonna have them travel from, but then I know that's not a possibility, but that's what they suggested. Because of the lack of.
Coverage.
Coverage that we have in the county. Now, we can also talk to, to Wolf City, which they don't have very much, or Commerce, which doesn't have very much either. So, our, our, our options are really kinda slim. And I understand that the police coverage is gonna be probably our biggest thing. Which crime, you know, so we're gonna, that's where we need to go ahead and let the citizens know. What is coming and how the city's planning.
Yeah.
And have us self, self-patrol ourselves. We've gotta allow the assistance, we gotta let the, the citizens know these warnings. We can't just hide it or just close our eyes and it will go away because if they get bombarded and they don't understand, they didn't get gas. Now, all the gas stations around here are out. They didn't go to Dollar General and get their groceries. Now, Dollar General's wiped clean. We're gonna have some really upset people. So, that's the other thing is we really do need to get the citizens to understand this as well.
Um, I, I was just gonna mention that, um, one thing that the, uh, uh, county had mentioned. That they're going to, um, kind of triage crime, right? So, they'll, you know, something that they might normally book somebody for and take them to, to jail for. Um, they may not do that now because they're going to have to triage because they're gonna be so thin. That they're going to, you know, have to say, uh, don't do that again, or normally they would do something about it, right? Because it takes the officer out of commission for two hours, right? To book.
For each arrest.
Yeah, for each arrest. So, anyway, go ahead.
I'm, I understand this event's gonna happen.
Yep.
Okay. But we are of a city with a small revenue.
Absolutely, we understand that.
This is not gonna bring in any revenue, so to speak.
This is gonna bring in sales tax revenue, yes it will. You will get sales tax revenue from this.
What are we gonna sell?
The city gets sales tax, everything's gonna be hit at Dollar General.
Okay.
So, I mean.
I mean, that's all we're gonna get is.
That's all we've got.
Eastside.
I understand.
Well, you have Eastside, you have J and J's.
Yeah, but I mean.
You're, you're right, there's not a ton.
We're talking about minimal, minimal revenue to a large expense.
Yeah, even if you're just talking toilets and trash, right? So, there's a, you know, maybe around a thousand bucks or something like that for that. And then the revenue you get, we totally understand that. We, we do. We totally get that. And we're just passing on information, hoping that we can be better prepared. But what we are looking at by not doing anything can also be pretty significant and costly as well.
Could be.
Could be, could be damage, it could be injury, it could just be a, a trash town that we've gotta go clean up for weeks and weeks and weeks. And who, who's gonna do that, right?
Right.
And, and like, like Paul, for example, is part-time and he's got other responsibilities. And so, then we're gonna rely on the community to come together. But hopefully, the city will, um, pull together. The, the city council can help create a plan and put something out there for everybody to see. I know it's kinda challenging, the communication part is kinda challenging, but we can do something. We can work together and we can let people know. Give them ideas and things, but I, it just depends. We can't do this ourselves. We really need the city council's help to. You know, push this forward and see what can be done. So, are there other questions?
No, y'all covered it really well. We just need to make some.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Um, please, please consider, um, some of those, I know that it's a lot. I know there's not, but this is not gonna be just a, a, a four and a half minute thing. People are gonna be on their way to a big event and they're gonna be, you know, Dolores, we left late, it's starting, pull over. Or stop right here. It happens all the time. People stop in the middle of highways. It takes hours and hours to get places. It's gonna, it potentially is gonna be pretty significant. So, thank you for your time. Um, I know, I don't wanna take a ton of your time, uh, but if you have more questions, we're available. We'd love to answer more questions for you and, and ask, and, you know, together as a council, another time, or individually. Please feel free to give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good information. Thank you. So, we do need to look into that.
We need to look into a lot of things.
Yeah.
But, uh, I mean, first thing to me, this would be like a chamber situation. I mean, I would think they would, they would be.
We are doing our part. I mean, I already know we're already planning our part, you know, to do something, but we also, depending on the city too.
So, what is that part?
Uh, I believe we're gonna do a few. Anybody wanna speak for the chamber? Russel?
As for the chamber. Uh, our president. Already budgeted.
Okay.
For trash and for.
Porta potties.
Porta potties.
Okay.
We've got that handled. We've got T-shirts to sell. We are also planning on doing a cookout sort of thing so that we could actually raise money for the fire department. And, um, having stations to where some of us are set up at the fossil park. So, we can kind of monitor that the best that we can, as well as have somebody down here at the city square. So, that we can have monitor down here. Actually, our access to emergency services though are gonna be dim or low. Um, we also have, we're hoping to try and get a ham radio operator that can come around and hang out in Ladonia. And come back and check with us in case we do need emergency services. However, the fire department needs to do their part. They need to make sure. That our back door cell signal that they are supposed to have needs to be, they need to make sure it's up and running.
But they're working.
They're still gonna have, they're still gonna have nine-one-one.
I, I understand, but they're working, so.
Right, but they still need to make sure.
Leave their job on nine-one-one.
They have to be able to communicate to each other and with all of this influx of people. Our one little AT&T tower is going to be packed. All emergency services by law have a back door for all cell service companies. But they have to make sure that it's up and running. We also have to make sure city has an actual account. Or an, an, a contract with AT&T. One of the things that you could do is you could ask AT&T to come out and put a deployable. Antenna out here to give us extra signal. Or you could take the opportunity and talk to T-Mobile or Verizon. To come out and do deplorables, deployables is what they call them. And maybe work into another contract where we get extra money on the towers.
Well, I think with, uh, with that situation, that's gonna be a, an issue with AT&T because we're contracted to them. So, I don't think we can bring in somebody else to do that. Nevertheless.
The one thing they didn't mention, the county did say they are going to have one ambulance in Honey Grove. They have seven ambulances, four will be out and they will have one in Honey Grove. So, we'll have probably an ambulance closer than we've ever had before, but it'll only be one.
And if he does need, he said he's got seven, he's gonna have four. He can call in another one if we need one in this area. But that is all a triage center. The triage center is actually for all emergency personnel is gonna be in Bonham at the Armory. So, that's still a thirty-minute drive. So, those are, those are communications that. I believe the city is, should be responsible for and not necessarily.
Okay, I understand. Uh, Jason, I thought, was a ham radio operator?
He, I don't.
I, I am. I am. There's, there's plenty of them. There's many of them in town.
Okay, so, I mean, that's something that's, that can happen.
Sure.
Okay.
I, I personally will be already doing a lot of other things.
And you won't have to stop and do this?
But, but, um, but I can be available. There's others who are also available.
I, I, I like, I like the direction of this question because it moves from, how do we do this? To who do we engage that can help us do this, right? That's a, that's a fantastic question. And I think the chamber would be happy to collaborate with the city. If you would designate yourself and maybe one other cha-, uh, council member to meet with the officers of the chamber to figure out how we can partner on this. I think that'd be a great step forward.
And not only, not only that, deciding who's doing what will keep them double work.
Okay, so what I'm seeing.
She's a ham operator.
Yeah, they are.
I'm see, seeing what so far the biggest portion is gonna be. Uh, enforcement, law enforcement, something like that. That's, that's where the city needs to be more involved than anywhere else. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's, that to me is the largest, largest concern.
The, the biggest piece of this to be aware of is the stuff that we don't know that we don't know.
Yeah.
Right?
You won't know till it happens. Okay. Any more questions? I think I need to make a motion to. Get two people to meet with, uh.
The chamber?
The chamber.
Greg, I apologize. Would it be okay in there to include the approval of placing toilets and trash? Yeah, because if we could have them, we can, yeah, we just wanna make sure that that's okay.
I don't see the actual problem.
Does anyone want to meet with the chamber? You're going to, right? Right? I have plans to, hopefully I'll be able to. Well, I'll go in, okay.
Jason, we're trying to ask. Yeah. Yeah, um, Christie, Christie Rowell is the president. Christie Rowell is the president of the chamber. So, schedule a, a sit-down so we can go over this stuff and try and figure out exactly the best, um, course of action to take. That is affordable and doable. Um, we can definitely sit down with me and, uh, probably Jason because we're the, the two that have kinda won all meetings.
So, you are kinda like available.
Uh, tomorrow I am not.
Oh, we won't be tomorrow.
Please not tomorrow.
Okay, I make a motion that, uh, we have two people, which will be the mayor. They should meet with the chamber. Um, ASAP, just whenever, however, to discuss, um. What the city needs to be involved in.
On the solar eclipse.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
N, L, I. Baby?
A.
So. Greg?
Okay. Feeding, uh, H, feeding Fannin, improve safety plan.
Um, thank you. Um, again, I provided a short document about that and a map. Was everyone able to read that and review it?
Yes, sir.
Um, what we're looking at, at doing, you know, it's all there. Um, you know, feeding Fannin is important to our community, obviously, by the numbers that come out. Um, we are, um, we're trying to minimize danger as much as we can. And we sometimes don't know until, um, we've experienced it. We would like to, it was offered to the, um, to Feeding Fannin some, some time ago. To utilize the barricades that the city has. They have some street signs that block off some roads. That while we're doing the distribution, that, and that's what this is about, is to improve safety for our volunteers. And for the neighbors that come, um, to control traffic a little better by blocking off, uh, some of the streets. So, that we don't have, uh, while we're doing it, we'll have, um, we've even had teachers just on their way to school because we're late. Blow right through there. And so, we really want to try and, um, just, uh, pro- provide some safety since that's the area that we're at right now. Um, if we could do that, so what I'm asking is for the signs on the day of the distribution. To the, to be put, you know, on the south end of the square. We'll place them during the distribution and put them back and then they can be collected by the city at some other time. Um, then we could use those. If they're available, if they're not, we'll have to find some other way.
You're asking for what signs?
The barricades.
Oh, barricades.
Um, or, early on, when we first started this, um, Greg, I think it was you that, that said that there was some, but I don't know. So.
I don't know what's over there anymore.
I, yeah. So, if they're available, if that could be something that could, um, if you have them, if they could be made available. We'll place them in the appropriate location. They made a map to show where they were so that during the distribution, we can be a little bit more safe for our volunteers. We have a lot of our kids that are out there, some of our high school and elementary kids that are out there, want to be safe. Um, we've put up flags, we've had adults standing there, trying to block, and we still have people just blow through there. I know that it's just once a month and I know that it's a normal traffic route. But that's, uh, the best place that we have to do it, uh, currently. So, we'd love to, uh, have the city council consider. Um, allowing us to use those and, um, making them available by placing them on the south end of the square. And then we'll put them back when we're done with them. So, they can be collected by the city employee or whoever, um, is responsible for that.
What day is Feeding Fannin on this, like, this?
Um, so, this next, it's normally on the first Tuesday of every month. However, the first Tuesday of March is voting and so, we're gonna move it to the twelfth of March. And since we know way in advance, we're able to do that, so.
Okay.
Is that cool?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No. I guess you can call and see if the city has, Sydney.
Okay. I don't know who else in the city I would talk to that's not there, so. So, if you could find out for me, is that, great, great, thank you. Would you, thank you. If you'll let me know, that'd be great. So, I don't know. Anyway, yeah, if you can let me know if they're available and if, if they are. Uh, maybe that's something that could happen tonight if they are available, would, they would be made for use. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, I make a motion that we, uh, look and see what kinda barricades we got, if we have any. And make them available for Feeding Fannin on March the twelfth.
I'll second that. All in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Baby?
Aye.
Fisher? Greg?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, sec- city secretary evaluation.
Let us get down to the room, Jay.
Huh?
Want that last?
Make that last. Consult with attorney. Okay, Jay, consult with attorney and about citizens' questions.
Um, I think we got two or three things to go into. I guess we have to on J or K. Um. I don't know about J or K. We need to go to closed. Uh, we do for, uh. Just the, the questions, phone calls, emails, whatever.
We got Kate on the back.
Do you want to address that now?
Sure. But if, if you're gonna ask me for advice.
Yeah, that's why, that's what I was getting at, I think. And then the last one.
You're going in?
Huh?
Don't we need to go in there for us?
We don't have to, but, you know, we, because we're just gonna ask him to make a agreement, so.
We don't have to, but, you know, we, because we're just gonna ask him to make an agreement, so...
Oh.
Not up in agreement, so maybe we don't either way, and then come back down. Okay.
What are we gonna do?
We're gonna close. Close, what time?
What, we're over?
No, we're closing, going into closed session.
I wanna go into closed session.
I see we're gonna close.
I would like to.
I have no idea what, I don't know. All right, we're going into closed session at nine oh nine.
We need to call that agenda item, Mayor, nine C, recall.
Gonna reopen.
I need to reopen the agenda item C on water department billing method including meter reading and data recording.
You wanna... I don't remember exactly how we stated it.
Oh.
Just, uh, yeah, go ahead, we do that.
Uh, Ms. Hamilton, do we say, need to say in addition to, or...
Well, I thi- I think the, the, the policy's gonna be that once, once an account is sixty days delinquent, then the notice letter will be sent out, and, and that notice letter will tell, will inform the citizen, you're, you're this many days past due, and here's what your arrears is, and tell them they need to come in and talk to the city, or there'll be a cutoff date and their water will be shut off. If they come in, then the city secretary would be authorized to do a payment plan with them, um, and part of that payment plan is they have to keep their water usage for the next months, that has to be current, but then they have to pay on the arrears.
So all forward and water bills have to be current, and that one month that they're late is what they can make payments on?
Paying it off. It could be s- s- they're late as much as sixty days, but whatever that amount is...
In those sixty days.
They have to, have to address that in that agreement, we're gonna pay this much on it at a certain time.
So they're gonna pay that much plus their next water bill?
That's correct.
Yeah, the current water bill.
And, and that agreement should specifically state, and I think there's one here that does already, that, that if they, if they miss that, then the, the, the city can go ahead and terminate their, their water just immediately. So it's notice letter sixty days past due, uh, then, uh, contact the city within that time, payment arrangements made through the city secretary, uh, and the payment arrangements has to include keeping their use forward current, can't get any more delinquent. And that could be the motion if anybody just wants to say that. Or not say it, say, yeah, what he said.
Yeah, what he said.
Yeah, what he said.
I make a motion, what he said.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, Jan?
Aye. Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
DeShia?
Yes.
Okay.
Instead of a rate, did you mean a schedule? Is that...
What's the next one?
Jan seconded that last one, huh?
No, I did.
You did.
DeShia.
Ready for the next one? Everybody finish one. Uh, I make a motion, we increase the salary of the city secretary by two dollars an hour.
Do I have a second?
Two seconds.
All in favor, Jan?
Um... I want a stain.
Debbie?
I agree.
DeShia?
Same.
Greg?
Yes.
Does that mean that passed?
No, it means you gotta break the tie.
You gotta break the tie.
Oh, goodness. I will, uh, vote for her having a two-dollar raise.
Okay, consult with attorney about, uh, citizen questions, that's where, yeah, we should have the rest of the people here.
Well, let me say this, over, over the last week, I've gotten, I've gotten, uh, personal emails, some text messages and things from people, particularly about the election, uh, and I'll, I'll tell the city, if I call somebody up, I'll call a citizen and say, hey, I'm, I'm just trying to give you this data, I don't charge the city for that, and I made two calls like that over the, over the, the course of this election business and trying to get these things done. The city got public records requests on a daily basis for information about the elections, and I finally, I, I called and said, th- this is how this is gonna work, uh, and I'm trying to get you your data. And so I didn't bill the city for that, I didn't, now, the other side of that's true, if somebody starts to call me up, I can't give them legal advice because I'm your lawyer. I mean, I just can't. So, I usually try to tell them just right up front, look, you, I'm, I'm not the guy you need to be talking to, and if it's a legislative matter, certainly, I don't legislate for the city, that's something else here. So I will redirect them if they call me generally and say, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't address that, that question for you, I just can't do it, not that I don't want to, there's several times tonight where I thought, well, I kinda know the answer to that, but I don't say anything, it's, it's, that's not what I'm here for. So, just so you'll know, if I decide to call somebody, I'm not gonna bill you for it. If somebody calls me, I'm gonna tell them, not my deal, not, not, don't, don't, don't call me, I can't do that for you, I'm sorry. And some people will be offended by that, just, you'll know, they, just the way it works.
Thank you for that ex- explanation.
You're, you're more than welcome, Mayor.
No, no action. No action on that one?
No.
Yeah. Okay, kay, kay.
Already closed, kay?
You're ready, yes.
Here's what I understand, the deal is on that one, and y'all can recommend, wrong, you've got a city employee in the public works department, if the city pays for him to get a license or a license to, to enhance his employability, then there's gonna be a, a covenant in this agreement that he has to work for the city for two years after he gets that license. If he or she does not, then the cost of that license can be recovered from that person. Uh, and there, there are actually provisions where you can kind of hold some of that at least out of the last check, if it's, because police, police departments are starting to give incentive bonuses to people, so I've researched that, and you can do that, if they don't, if they don't work for a certain period of time, after they get that incentive bonus, you can say, look, we, we're gonna get that money back, and we can help part of it out of your last check, and if that's legal, so I'll, I'll draw that up, and that's what the council's pleasure is.
I make a motion, what he said.
Okay, what he said.
Draw a letter.
Draw a letter.
You're getting good.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You second that, Greg?
Yes.
If I can be a one year or...
Okay, one more.
One more?
One year.
Yeah.
One year, I'll be a...
Lean to your arm, yeah.
Ten years.
I make a motion, we adjourn at ten ten.
Oh my God, anybody second that?
I second.
Thank you.
Third, fifth, sixth.
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
I guess I didn't make it on the agenda?
I'm sorry?
I thought I put in to be on the agenda.
You don't, you were.
You were.
Not with what we was talking about, I just gave you a report.
Uh, that, no, then you, then we discussed, uh...
Water sewer status.
The water and sewer status.
Yeah, what about the, the...
That, that's why I thought you, that's why I thought you said you wanted to wait till...
You get the other report.
Uh, the other guy...
The covert cleaner or not?
I'm sorry?
The covert cleaner.
Okay, we got the deal for the covert cleaner, but I thought you wanted to do all of that when, after you met with, uh, the guy that's coming.
Oh, well, we can, okay.
Okay, well...
Well, what about this pump?
Um...
I've got, the cheapest price was fifty feet, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
I under- I understand, the mayor can approve, can approve that and take it out of her weekly or day here.
Bringing somebody over here?
I, I understand, I, I'm in full agreement, but, I mean, I'll...
Uh, talk to me tomorrow, okay?
You wanna sleep good?
Well, we can talk now, but...
He's gonna have to come pump your bedroom out, I guess.
Pump my bedroom?
Yeah, if you, if you get a water leak, how's, how you gonna get the water out? I'm just messing with you.
Thank you.
Okay.